Good evening and welcome to the March 2022 Regular Council Meeting for the Village of Blacks Harbor. I will call the meeting to order at 6:37 PM tonight. Record of attendance, everybody is here tonight except for Counselor Libby. I wanted to welcome CHCO tonight, being here tonight also, Andrew Sutton and Dale Wells. Thank you guys very much for coming in tonight. I'd like to ask council tonight just to join with me in a moment of silence. Please join me with me in observing a moment of silence for those souls killed in the unprovoked armed aggression of Ukraine and to pray for peace there and throughout the world. That moves us all on to council to approval of committee minutes and recommendations tonight. Do we have any of those tonight?
None. There's one motion that came forward from a meeting that we had that's in here.
Yes. It's under the approval agenda to add.
Okay. Business arising, do we have any business arising tonight that has to be added tonight? None, approval of the agenda, I'll look for a motion on the floor.
Be resolved the agenda for the March 16th, 2022 Regular Meeting of Council be accepted as presented with the addition of item 18.2, hearing of objections date to be determined.
Motion by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Wells. Any question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. Disclosure of conflict of interest tonight on the agenda, anybody wants to disclose, this is the time to do that. If not, we move ahead to approval of a council minutes. And I'll look for a motion for the floor.
Be resolved that the minutes from the regular meeting of council on February 16th, 2022 has pre circulated, approved and filed.
Made by our deputy mayor, seconded by Counselor Thompson. Question or comment, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. Number eight, staff reports, eight one is the fire department, and we have our fire chief here tonight. Fire Chief Shaw. Camera's going right on him.
Thank you, council, mayor, council. Fire calls for last month. We had a total of two calls last month, and for comparison for 2021, for February, we had 10 calls. It's a slow month. We did do first day training last weekend. We had, I think it was six firefighters that would need to be done, including myself there, and we got that finished up. So I guess that's about all I got to report other than we're gearing up for grass fire season. We always start early in this area. Charlotte County is always way ahead of everybody else. So I guess that's a good thing because we're getting nicer weather. That's about all I have to report, I haven't too much more. Unless council has anything to ask of me.
I'll go to council in one sec. How's the new nine one, the new nine one one service, is it still working pretty good?
It is working good. We are not having any issues on that part. The only adjustment is maybe for us is, is I don't like carrying two radios. One was bad enough, but now I have to carry two, but I'm dealing with it. We are going to have to buy another mobile radio for one of our trucks, but we'll get that in, that done here in the near future. But no, it seems to be the calls are coming in good, everything's working good. The feedback we get back is after the call, 24 hours later, we get an email from nine one one stating our times, everything was said on the radio for leaving the station in response time to getting the station. And I forwarded the care, and care attached to our call sheet. So there's always a record of it, which is, I like that, that's a good idea. We're looking at a nine one one center in St. John, they're still recovering from their cyber attack a year ago. And we're trying to get them set up so they can email our dispatch system on our phone, and they're telling us another month they should be ready for that, so. So that's all good stuff too, so that's more, it's more tools for our toolbox, I guess you could call it.
I'd love to counsel for any more questions or comments.
The app that we used to have, I can't remember what it was called, you guys had it on your phone, does that work with the new nine one one?
Yes, it does, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the one I'm talking about.
Okay.
They should be able to send it to that, they call the cab system or something, I'm not sure of the technical name on it. And it should come up on your phone and actually map you to that fire.
Okay.
And that's what we're shooting for. And actually, that system also has all our fire hydrants on it now, so we can look at our phone when the call goes in, you can see, oh, there's a fire hydrant there.
Okay.
It has a lot of benefits to it.
What's the reason on the two radios to call, just one for local?
Because we use our radios, what we normally always had.
Okay.
And then the dispatch calls come in on a different radio. It does go over our radios, but we can't communicate back to them with our, we have to use the newer radios. They do have advantages. I got called out, just a quick example, last spring, last year, with search and rescue, the Mounties, the RCMP called me, they had a person lost in the woods. And wanted to know if we could come over with our thermal limbs and camera to help assist them. So I went over, and we already had the, we weren't online, but we already had the equipment in the truck on the new radio systems. And when we got there, we were able to switch our radio, new radio system over to search and rescue, so we could communicate that way. It worked, and that has an advantage, right? So we all were able to stay on the same system. And the RCMP switched theirs over to that, so we were all working off the same channel and communications side, so there is benefits.
Okay. Great, any other questions or comments from, if not, thank you very much. Chief, and I'll look for a motion on the floor to accept.
Be it resolved that the fire department report for the month of February 2022 be approved and filed.
Counselor Ritchie's made the motion, seconded by Counselor Wells. Question or comment? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, and that's passed unanimously, thank you again.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, can you give me follow up?
I will do, yeah, absolutely, great. Next is eight two, the building inspector's report, he's not here tonight, would somebody like to do that for us?
I will, as soon as you get it there. So it looks like for the month of February, we had six different tasks to fulfill.
Sorry.
Yeah, no worries, that's fine. Technology always isn't a friend. So it looks like there is a mobile and administration task, an arena street inspection, other mobile and administrative tasks, meeting to discuss a new house. Is there a value to the side there, Stacy? Does it scroll over to the side of the screen typically there's a?
There's, there are no permits, those are just inspections.
What's the permit one that's there for the number?
Yep, so although there was task complete, there were zero permits issued, so the estimated value was zero for this month.
Okay, we have that report there, I'm going to ask somebody to make your motion.
Be it resolved that the building inspector's report for the month of February 2022 be approved and filed.
Good enough, Counselor Ritchie making that motion, seconded by Counselor Thompson. Question or comment on the motion?
So does that mean that there's been no permits this year up to March yet? Okay.
Any other questions or comments on that motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. Public Works Report. Yeah.
Development happening.
We're going to move on to the Public Works Report, eight three, Counselor Ritchie, would you like to do that, or Counselor Wells, either one? Oh, Jordan, okay, I'm sorry.
It doesn't matter, I can do it.
I just looked at. You're carried, okay, good.
Yeah, no problem, so pretty much routine maintenance done, I guess, on the chlorine flow meter filters at the building and the lagoon checks were done every day as well. Lift stations were checked every Monday, Wednesday and Friday around the village. Water tests were completed every second Tuesday, and sewer tests were completed once per month, once a month, I guess, for the month of February. Checked and collected trash bins around the village daily as required. Garbage collection occurred every Thursday and recycling pickup as per the calendar on the Wednesday that fell in the month of February. There were a few calls, some sewer issues, they had to call in a contractor, Woody's, to come in and clear the line, it looks like. Broken hydrant at Lewis Connor's Lane. There was some activity at the curling ice going in at the arena. There were some repairs that were completed on the, on the backhoe as well as the one ton truck, there was, I think they had taken it into spring works for a new, for a new spring, it looks like, or sorry, a disc and hose repair to a hydraulic leak. Three tons, some additional repairs, trackless, there was some welding that was performed on the trackless, was that the new one or the old?
The new one.
Yeah, so welding on the universal joint. Road work, obviously, we had a few storms, I think they were saying nine, yeah, for the month of February, so a lot of events there. Guys worked hard to keep everything good and clean. Garbage truck, Rathburns replaced a radiator hose. And miscellaneous, I guess, some other items there, received and put together new pressure washer and working on the, I'm not sure what that acronym is, do you know what that is?
Here it sits, I can't think of what it is, but it's our water and sewage report, so you send to the federal government.
Right on. Yeah, that's everything.
Great. Okay, I'll look for a motion on the floor, and then we can go to question or comment on, I'll accept any motion.
Be it resolved that the public works report for the month of February 2022 be approved and filed.
Seconded by?
I'll second that.
Deputy Mayor. Question or comment on this report? None, that's a big, pretty big report.
We've had lots of calls commending the job that the public works has done clearing the sidewalks, so just want to put a shout out to the crew of the public works department.
The, so shortly, within the next month or so, we should look at getting that scheduled for that sweeper truck for spring?
Yeah.
That comes in and washes the road, and a lot of times we have to try to schedule that ahead, so.
Yeah.
So that means it's the end of snowmobile season?
No, it's not. Not until April 15th, the trails close then. We're still going north.
Okay, no other questions or comments, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's passed unanimously, CAO's report, I'll go to.
So we met with NV Power about the streetlights. We identified some areas where there was, it was dark, people had called complaints about lights, not sufficient lighting. One was installed at Mill Street Park, Mill Stream Park. They haven't installed any of the other ones besides changing the ones at the arena to LEDs, those are much brighter now. The other ones are coming within the next little bit. Hopefully, everybody will have a lot better walking experience at night now. We continued with bubble skates and we started bubble curling, that's been quite a success, there's been lots of families down. The school actually went down right before March break and had to skate and curling.
We actually had international students.
Yeah, and we had the international students come as well during March break. We interviewed for our assistant treasurer. We met with some community members to form a committee for the arena going forward. We've also collaborated, collaborated with Glenn Hawkins from the Community Development of Eastern Charlotte, he's been doing some work here in the village, looking at upcoming development and opportunities for development in the village. Ongoing, we've got some reviews going on in the space at the arena for upcoming projects, we're looking at adding girls' changing rooms, doing lighting upgrades, et cetera. We've also, these, these were happening last month as well, we're looking at upgrading our internet at the arena. We're prepping for the audit, and we've had some discussions with the transition coordinator about the upcoming amalgamation. These have involved discussions about the boundary lines of that entity, and we've also had some discussions about the naming. That needs to be done, what's the cutoff, May 15th?
16th.
16th. So if anyone has some input, I'm not sure of the process that we're going to follow yet, maybe you guys will have something about that later on. Yeah. And so for quarter one, we've got some development incentive bylaws that we're looking at implementing. We're looking at QP negotiations, and we're looking to start some strategic planning as well. There's been a few meetings, we've had some water kickoff for the water project planning and boundary discussions. We've sold one of our lots recently, and PAC met recently about a zoning of an upcoming project, which we'll talk about later.
Sounds like you're busy this past month.
Busy month.
Questions, I want to do, I'll look for a motion for the floor first, and then we'll go into question or comment. Counselor Thompson?
Sure, yeah, so be it resolved in CAO's report for the month of February 2022 and to date for March 2022, be approved and filed.
We have a motion on the floor, seconded by?
I'll second that.
Deputy Mayor. Question or comment at this time, Stacy's here to answer any questions.
Do you have any idea when the QP negotiations are planning to kick off?
The guys have met with the person on their end, they're coming up with some little ideas, and we're looking to have that happen as soon as possible.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments on that report?
I do appreciate how organized the report is. It's laid out nice, easy, easy to follow, and I think you're doing a good job with it.
Absolutely.
It's also much lighter in front of my house, on the main street now.
Yes, I was going to say, the light that's in the park, after many, many years of people parking in the park at nighttime, it's nice now to be lit up, so, I know beside my eyes.
You must have trouble sleeping at night, Counselor Ritchie.
The first two nights, I was convinced.
I left that bathroom light on so many times, but we've gotten used to it now, and it is nice to have a street lit up for people walking at night. I didn't realize that when we were done, well, that's good change.
But yeah, good changes.
You should save it on your electric bill, doesn't it? Okay, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. Accounts, budget figures, I'll look for a motion for the floor.
Be resolved that council approve the budget figures for the period ending February 28th, 2022.
We have a motion on the floor by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor, Deputy Mayor?
Sure.
Yes, I saw you move into the corner of my eye. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. Move on to nine two, accounts payable. Look for a motion for the floor, Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, I can make that, so be it resolved that council approve the total of accounts payable paid and or payable for the month of February 2022 in the amount of $185,538, $538 cents. And payables to date for the month of March 2022 in the amount of $98,388.89.
We have a motion on the floor by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor, Counselor Ritchie. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that's passed unanimously. Reading of petitions, presentations and proclamations, there are none of those tonight. Eleven is communications, we do have a few communications, we have, the first one's from Fundy High School, Fundy Middle and High School, sorry. I will read this one, because some explaining to do in it.
Who thought Makerspace is?
Makerspace.
Makerspace.
Maker, yeah, that's why I read it, so it does, it does explain in the letter. February the 15th, 2022, to whom this may concern, at Fundy Middle and High School, we are committed to providing our students with the tools they need to learn and grow. We are excited to announce our newest venture, the development of our Fundy Middle and High School Maker Space. As part of our school improvement plan, our goal is to increase student engagement by creating innovative learning spaces, encouraging personalized learning and self-assessment and empowering teacher innovation. One crucial strategy outlined in the plan to achieve this is the transformation of our current middle school workroom, science lab into a functional, up to date maker space. A maker space is a collaborative, collaborative, sorry, collaborative workspace within the school where students can make, learn, share, explore using high tech to no tech materials. This space will be open to the students and adults and have a variety of creation materials, including technology for editing, circuits, sewing machines, crafting items, building exploratory toys like Lego and Connects, as well as scientific exploration items for labs and demonstration. This just names a few. To help cover the cost of the environment change, we are reaching out to you with hopes that you are willing to make a donation of some form that we could put towards our Maker Space fundraising online auction. Our goal is to raise $5,000 for this auction and to put towards this space and ultimately enrich learning opportunities for our youth. The online auction will be open on Facebook from April the 7th to the 10th, and we are open to any sort of donation you are willing and able to contribute. We thank you for considering and look forward to seeing you at the auction. If you can help our school with this by, by way for, for a prize or donation, please contact me at the email address, address below. This comes from Mrs. Rebecca Rutterman, Vice Principal of the Fundy Middle and High School.
So I'll make a motion. Be resolved that council donate, and I'm going to amend this a little bit, that we donate two one hour ice times for the auction. For the Patrick Connors Recreation Complex for the season of '22 and '23. For Fundy Middle High School for their auction for the Maker Space.
Give you a motion on the floor by Deputy Mayor, seconded by Counselor Thompson. Question or motion, question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, and that's passed unanimously.
I should have said a comment on.
You go ahead.
Yeah, maybe we could just share that on our social media, that they're, you know, they're looking for, yeah, that they're looking for things so people in the community could personally donate.
Okay, we'll move on to eleven one, proposal for YMCA, this is a short letter, so I'll read this. Dear Mayor and Council, thank you for allowing us this opportunity to propose and hopefully expand services to Blacks Harbor. This is coming from the Y. We have been working in Charlotte County since 2018, and we hope with your support, we can accelerate our work. The community has come together and are eager to have more Y programs, bringing more opportunities to this region. At the Y, we believe we can make this happen by providing quality community recreation programs and services that are welcoming, engaging, while utilizing the latest trends and research for Blacks Harbor. By supporting the Y, you are engaging with a community of people who are passionate, knowledgeable, and have the qualifications to bring high quality programming to our, to your community. We are delighted to propose a program plan for the Fundy Arena in Blacks Harbor to complement the work currently underway to see the facility utilized to a greater extent, becoming the center of your community. The attached proposal describes and outlines program options and costs for recreational programs at the Fundy Arena. I look forward to discussing this opportunity further to answer any questions you may have. This comes from the President and CEO of the Y and the Chief Operating Officer of the CEO. The package is before you, what I would do at this point, council is entertain a motion.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion, pretty excited about this, I think it's one of the most awesome things that's come, especially in this year, but also to the arena for years, so. Be resolved that council accept the agreement for the YMCA proposal for recreation programming at the Patrick Connors Recreation Complex with the option to expand in the future.
We have a motion on the floor by the Deputy Mayor, seconded by Counselor Wells.
They're all racing for that one. We're all excited.
Yeah.
Okay, now we'll go to question or comment on the motion. Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, another comment, I guess, yeah, no, just echoing Adam's comments, this is a really exciting opportunity for all, I guess, be for all ages in the, in our community, from seniors to, you know.
One to ninety-nine.
Yeah, one to ninety-nine, that's their motto, so, very excited, and hopefully with schools opening up, there's an opportunity to partner with the school and utilize the gymnasium and really expand the programming that the Y is able to offer for, for all of our residents here in the harbor, so I think this is an awesome move forward, and will really help to secure the future of recreation and the arena in the village for many years to come, so. Excellent.
I know myself, I can't wait to see a sign mounted on Patrick Connors with the Y symbol on it, to be honest.
Yeah, another good point, I guess, is we're actually going to have a coordinator with this, with this proposal, will come a full-time recreation coordinator to help with this programming, and they'll actually be sitting right here in the village office, so, you know, if anyone has any ideas or any suggestions on programming, fundraising, or anything, I think they're going to be more than accommodating to work with everybody, so.
Yeah.
Good work, everybody.
Any other questions or comments on this motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. Eleven one is from the Budget Police Association, they're looking for, I guess, funding, I'm not going to read all their letter tonight. Would council like to make a motion on that tonight?
I'll make a motion that we defer that to, that request to the Finance Committee.
Great, and Counselor Thompson makes that motion, seconded by Counselor Ritchie. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Alright.
Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. Eleven two is correspondence for information, there's nothing tonight. Approval of committee minutes and recommendations, twelve one's the PAC recommendation. And I'll, we'll go to, I guess, we have, the motion is right there in front of us, so I'll look for a motion on the floor. None?
I can.
Counselor Thompson, good.
So do I want to read the description first?
Yeah, I was going to read it, but you go ahead.
Development Officer has received a request for rezoning, the rural plan amendment from Cloverly Seafoods for rezoning PID 015152374. Currently zoned as C, which is commercial zone, R2 single, two multifamily, two and multifamily residential zone for the purpose of adding 12 housing units to the village. So it's currently zoned as commercial, and they're going to be applying for zoning of R2. Be it resolved that a public hearing be held for the, for the proposed rezoning of PID 015052374, date to be determined.
Good, we have a motion on the floor by Counselor Thompson, seconded, seconded by Deputy Mayor. Question or comment, the only thing, I'll just make a quick comment, is that the, the property is what everybody calls the 260 Building in Blacks Harbor.
It's right behind the Stella Marfs, behind the Stella Marfs.
Exactly, right behind the Stella Marfs, exactly.
So can we set that date?
Yeah, we need to look at all the, with man's, or we need to look at all the requirements, if there's a time period, it has to be 21 days.
Okay.
Then thirty, it has to be between 21 and 30 days, we have to advertise, there's a bunch of requirements, so.
Okay.
There's more to look into before we finalize that.
Perfect, thank you.
Motion on the floor, any other questions or comments, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. Business arising for the minutes, none, unfinished business, RSC proposal, look for a motion for the floor for this. Counselor? Counselor Ritchie?
Be it resolved to accept the offer from RSC for planning and development services with the option to form a civic trust to engage existing PAC members for the remainder of 2022 at prorated cost to the end of the year.
We have a motion on the floor by Counselor Ritchie, seconded by Counselor Thompson. Question or comment on the motion?
I do have a comment.
Yep.
Um, so just, I guess, the way the motion read, it's not entirely clear, but the civic trust will extend out beyond 2022? So this is something that'll, you know, I guess, remain for the long term and carry over into the new municipality as well, so.
Should that motion be amended?
I think it was just, yeah, just the way that it reads is not clear about the civic trust, but I think it's okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. That brings us to sixteen, there's no new business tonight, that business to the council is concerned, I have a few that I'll start with tonight. I'll wait for the camera to turn around here. There we go. Okay, I'll, I'm going to report on the municipal entity fifty-three, I'll go to the Deputy Mayor if I miss anything after. I'll go to the Deputy Mayor if I miss anything afterwards. The maps for the new boundaries are now out, and the ward maps will be out later this week. The ward system, the ward system is the method of representation for each area within this entity. The elections will consist of one representative of each ward for council and two at-large representatives who can be elected from any ward. The new council will be eight councilors and one mayor. The election will be in late November, which is November the twenty-eighth, if I'm not mistaken, this year, with the council taking over in January of two thousand twenty-three. We're also, the transition team is, committee is in the process of coming up with a name for the entire entity. This will not, and I want to let people know that, just to be clear, this is not going to replace your address. So if your address is in Blacks Harbor, that will still continue. Your nine-one-one numbers and all that sort of thing will not change. So just want to let people know, there are a lot of people asking that. So it will not replace the names of the current areas. This will be a new name that will encompass the whole area. The process is to be done by May sixteenth, was what Stacy had talked about first. So we're working on which way, the best way to do this and include input from all the residents. What I would suggest tonight, if anybody has any ideas, is to send them into the village. If you've got any ideas, I'll make sure the transition team sees the names, if we have any ideas. The transition team is trying to think of other ways to have some open meetings, some public meetings, but the time is running short. May sixteenth is the date that we were given to do it, and if it's not done by May sixteenth, the province of New Brunswick will come up with their own name.
And we should stress that they need to approve that name once it's submitted.
That's correct. The province of New Brunswick will have to approve it, and they, there's a, there's a bunch of things they have to go through to make sure that it's not a redundant name in the province. There's not something that's being used a lot somewhere else, so they have to look at and approve the final of it, the final name. Exactly. We'll keep everybody informed as the process progresses, but if you have any concerns, please send them to the village office, any questions at all, or to the Deputy Mayor, or myself. I'm trying to, I keep sending emails to the council of all the meetings we've had, and, but so far, as I say, oh, the ward system is set. The sixth ward is the Blacks Harbor. I'm just going through my mind. Beaver Harbor, Penfield, that's three. The town of St. George is four. St. George LSD is five, and Fundy Bay would be number six. So each one of those wards is guaranteed one seat at the new table. Guaranteed one seat. And then after that, there'll be two at large. Is that's all I can make any comments on tonight for that. Tonight, I want to wish speedy recovery to Cara Hat tonight. She's not with us tonight, she's ill and at home, so I want to send a speedy recovery to her tonight. Happy St. Patrick's Day tomorrow. As my old friend Alan Sullivan always told me, you know, he always said on this day, there are only two kinds of people in the world, the Irish and those who wish they were. I want to congratulate my stepson, Austin Dewar, tonight on his wedding to Chelsea Henley, coming on this Friday afternoon. Austin, after me, you are the luckiest guy in the world. Here's the part, the ones I don't like doing, but it's something I do. On behalf of the Village of Blacks Harbor, I extend our heartfelt sympathies to the family of Mabel Conley, who passed away on Sunday, February the twentieth. Mabel was the wife of the late William Bill Conley, senior of St. Stephen, born in Blacks Harbor near Brunswick, February the third, nineteen twenty-seven. Mabel will be fondly remembered by everybody. Her larger-than-life personality, her love for her family and friends, and her ability to always make you laugh will never be forgotten. Mabel was a dedicated employee, and we all have fond memories from her time as Mother Mabel at Connor's Brothers. She could always make your day a little more enjoyable with a great joke. Mabel will be greatly missed by all that knew and loved her. Mabel is survived by her two sons, Glenn Conley and Bill, granddaughters Kristen, Jennifer, Patricia, and one grandson, Jason. The interment will be take, will be take place at the Blacks Harbor Community Cemetery in the spring, and she will be the last person to be laid to rest at this cemetery. Friends will be welcome to attend the graveside service when the date and time are announced. Tonight, we extend sympathies to the family of Lorraine Gedet, wife of David Gedet, who passed away on February the twenty-fourth. Lorraine is survived by her husband, David, son Stephen and Daniel Gedet, both of Blacks Harbor, as well as her brothers, David Seeley of Blacks Harbor, Peter Seeley of Blacks Harbor, John Seeley of Utopia, Mark Seeley of Blacks Harbor, Chris Seeley of St. George, and Fred Seeley of Boqabak. Sisters Bonnie Hooper of Oak Bay, Mary Blanchard of Blacks Harbor, and Nancy Wells of Beaver Harbor. Sympathies are also extended tonight to the family of Donna Hubbard, who passed away on February the twenty-eighth. Donna is survived by her children, Leah Hubbard, Lou McDonald, and Sean Field, as well as your sister Cecilia Hubbard here in Blacks Harbor. Donna was a member of the Ladies Auxiliary of the Royal Canadian Legion Number Thirty-nine here in Blacks Harbor. And this one, excuse me, this one is the hardest one I have to announce tonight. On behalf of the Village of Blacks Harbor and with saddened hearts, I extend heartfelt sympathies to the family of Charlotte Julianne Sparks, who unexpected passing occurred at the IWK Health Center in Halifax on February the twenty-second. Born in St. John on June second, two thousand twenty-one, she was the loving daughter of Albert and Leah Cunningham Sparks. A beloved daughter, a sister, granddaughter, and niece, Charlotte is survived by her parents, Albert and Leah Sparks of Blacks Harbor. Her siblings, Eileen and William. Maternal grandparents, Gord and Beth Cunningham of Boqabak. Paternal grandfather, William Sparks of St. John. Aunt Scarlett Bagley of St. George. Stephanie Dean of Sackville. Samantha Hat of New Brunswick, and Ruth Ann Viennu of Vax Bay, New Brunswick. Several cousins. Charlotte was predeceased by her maternal grandmother, Mary Johnson. Charlotte was truly the happiest baby you could meet. She had a smile and laugh that would light up any room, and she brought joy into the lives of those that she met. I'll go right around the table to Deputy Mayor.
Yeah. The, so anyway, I just got a few notes on, you know, as we know, the arena's coming to a close very shortly this season, and it's been a really successful season, to be honest. So the closing date will be on the weekend of Saturday, March twenty-sixth. That'll be the beginning of taking the ice out this year. On March twenty-sixth, we will be hosting a public skating from two-thirty to four. It's an open public skating now that the COVID restrictions have relaxed. Youth will stick, sorry, youth with sticks will be at four-thirty to six P.M. And this year, as with support from council here as a whole, when things get challenging and we wanted to see the facility used, we made the decision to go with like bubble rentals and bubble skates. So since December twenty-fourth that we've implemented that, when it all began, we have had a hundred and forty-seven bubble rentals as of this week, and there's still more to, obviously, to continue the next week and a half. I don't have the numbers for curling where we've been so far, but there's definitely been some people in and use the curling rink, and love to see it open and hope it will continue to stay next year. So I want to say thank you to everybody that supported us this year. And yes, we had, I think, just over two weeks of a complete closure with the arena with COVID. So really, at the end of the day, if you look at it, there wasn't too much of the books this year that was open for rentals. We had the opposite problem, where we had people competing on wanting the times, which, you know, as long as I've been in the village, I think that's a first. So I just want to say thank you to everybody in the community. At the end of the day, that facility is a community center, and it needs to be treated that way. So thank you.
Good, thank you. Council Ritchie?
Yeah, I'll just, I just wanted to speak to the chase DA, so I just have some notes up on my phone. I guess I just wanted to say thank you to everybody in the community that's really come together and joined our team and for selling for the arena. And a big shout out to Amber, who really took the lead on that and implemented it for our village. So the total results to date, we have, we have raised sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety-five cents. And the jackpot this week for somebody is up to five hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars. So I just want to say thank you for the support. It's certainly going to make a difference at our arena.
Great. Thank you very much. Council Wells? Council Thompson?
Yeah, so, you know, really good, really good news for the village. I just wanted to bring up a couple of things. I guess last year, we had, I guess, a couple of different recreation initiatives. We looked at the ball courts at the school, so I'm looking forward to getting those finished up for the spring, and hopefully we can look at other initiatives around the school and the community as well for two thousand twenty-two. Also, I guess, just a quick note on, there is a lot of development potential in the village. I think I'd mentioned this before, but right now, there's a, there's a lot of housing initiatives that have the potential to add some, some units down here in the village, which are desperately needed. So I'm really keen on getting some engineering reviews on certain properties to look at, you know, facilitating the installation of water and sewage to help, you know, spur some development down here in the village. So, yeah, all exciting things, and it's, it's good to see that everybody, you know, is going to be able to move freely again and get back to somewhat of a normal life as well, so.
Absolutely.
Very good. Thanks.
I almost didn't recognize any of you.
Nice to see you with a smile.
Oh, yes. Okay, Council, that brings us to question period. I'll go to CHCL. Do you have any questions there, on there? No, nobody questioning anything? Well, before I, before I go into the next part, I want to thank you, Andrew Sutton from CHCL. This is your last night here. You've already, you're already done with CHCL, except for tonight, but I want to wish you well in your, in your future, and you've done an excellent job for CHCL. We're very lucky to have that television, the, that television in our area is one of the most, one of the only independent ones in Canada. So Andrew, again, good luck to you and your future, and you're always welcome here in Blacks Harbor. Thank you very much. What I'll do, if there's no questions from anybody, our next meeting is April the twentieth, twenty-two. And then there'll be hearing of objections to be determined later of that rezoning. So at this point, I'll look for a motion for adjournment.
Be it resolved that the meeting be adjourned at seven-twenty P.M.
And I'll look for a seconder, Councilor Thompson, and that motion, so declare.